All right, I've got a thumbs up ladies and gentlemen, so we are, we are live Facebook. This is our work session in preparation for not only our first meeting in August, which is going to be Tuesday, August the first at 5:30, but also for our budget session. So we are starting at 10 o'clock today. We're going to start with our work session agenda, which is going to include a presentation by Philip Carter from the October County Library to, to the board, and then we will move into the agenda items. So Mr. Carter is here, and I presume ready to go with no further ado?
Absolutely.
All right, please.
I will give you all a few things. There's nothing vital in here. I try not to give you all half a tree in this handout. A couple of stickers here included, fun. And I've got some spares here that I will, so you all can see these as well. I'm not going to bore you to tears, I promise. I know libraries are not everybody's idea of the most exciting things on the planet, but they really should be. So, my name is Philip Carter. I am the Director of Lee Starkville, October County Public Library System. It's a running joke, it's the longest name in libraries. So, wanted to talk a little bit about what we've done in the last fiscal year, what we've done this fiscal year, and what we hope to do in the next fiscal year. So, these are just some bullet points. There's a whole bunch more information I can give you as you like. I also included a couple of calendars, and the calendars are just our children's programming, our tweens programming, which is that 10 to 12 range, and our teen programming. That's just the stuff that happens in one month at the Starkville Public Library. That's not including Maven, that's not including Sturgis, and that is about normal for us. Although this August, we're going to take a step back, because we're in a short staff. We've had some staff move on some more, so some exciting things, we're really excited with them, but we're in the process of hiring for those positions. So, obviously it's budget season, so that's why you see my face, and we're not going to pretend that's not why you see my face. So, want to talk about budgeting for a little bit. Right now, you'll see our circulation has grown since I've been here. Our programming has grown. Last year was a record year. We had 17,011 people attend programming at the libraries last year. We've already broken that this year, and we have two more on this. So, new record, yay. Wanted to talk about the number of library visits. Last year, which we were still rebounding from COVID, we had over 71,000 people visit the library. This year, we're on pace to break that, as we have already had 62,979 visits to the library this year. We're doing this on shoestring. We're absolutely doing this on shoestring. We're still, if you want to break the numbers down, I can. We can break it down per capita, we can break it down raw dollars, however you want to break it. We're doing this on an absolute shoestring budget. We're still short-staffed by two full-time positions by state accreditation standards. Our Friends of the Library group actually fund, I've got the number here, 78.1% of our book budget is Friends of the Library donations. Right now, our operating budget from charitable donations is 5.6% of our operating budget is just charitable donations. You can see the breakdown of funding sources. We get 15.6% of our funding by the state. That usually comes mostly in the form, to be honest, the two biggest forms, is they pay for our health insurance, and they give us a stipend called the PIGP. It's a personnel incentive grant. It is a, it's a grant that's been around for a while, it goes per, per public libraries to fund personnel. It actually got started back when they instituted the requirement that public library directors and systems must have a master's degree. So, what they did is they implemented that additional funding to make sure that library systems could fund a master's degree director. It is by per capita basis where we get that funding, but that's what does our primary sources of state funding. The rest of the funding, so 5.6 charitable giving, 15.6 from the state, that leaves almost 80% is local funding. That's City of Starkville, and that's October County. And we're, again, we're doing this on shoestring. Yes, ma'am?
Okay, October County's funding is a little higher than the City of Starkville. Is that to support Sturgis and Maven?
It is partially. So, October County's funding, this past year, they gave the exact same dollar amount as the City of Starkville, but in addition, they gave some additional funding for the Maven Public Library, the Sturgis Public Library, and they also fund our state law-required county law library, which we house, which at this point is basically, we pay for the database, we pay for OMSL database, so that all that's available, and we have a copy of the code available.
It's no longer, oh, you do have a copy of the code? You do have books?
We do have some books, yes. We, we have drastically reduced the size of that collection, though, because we saw it was not used, and I, I was real nervous about it. I'm not going to lie, I was real nervous about that one. I had multiple lawyers and county prosecutors come through the collection and tell me, "What do I actually need?" And they said, "The code." And so, that's what we've reduced down to, and we've got the, the database that's available as well. So that's where that additional funding comes from, from the county. I'd be remiss if I didn't include it, though.
Right.
So, and if we wanted to break it down to raw dollars, I could, I could break it down to raw dollars. Last year, City of Starkville gave us $275,000. County gave us $275,000 plus 7,500 each from Maven and Sturgis. They also gave us an additional 15,000 to make up some arrears from Maven's contributions to the system, and they give us, because it's based on tax, based on receipts in the court, it's about $10,000 a year for the law library. So, but I wanted to bring all this up, because I wanted to make sure you all have any questions for me, because I've worked very hard since I've been here. Before I got here, absolutely no shade, but the library system sort of operated inside the box. If it didn't happen inside the walls, the library didn't do anything in the community. And I've worked very, very hard since I've been here to build out and work more in the community. We started working with organizations like Starkville Strong, Community Counseling, the School District. I work a lot with MSU. In fact, I just met with, MSU has a new SAC person in their library dedicated to outreach. I just had lunch with them last week. We're going to start doing some really fun things here in the future. We also, this is a pie in the sky, I'm looking for a grant to help fund some of this. I've been talking to the Library Director over in Columbus, one of the things we'd like to do. In, in the Starkville Public Library, we see a lot of those with the greatest need in our community. We see a lot of the homes population come through our library. We see a lot of those who have no heat in their homes come in our library just for air conditioning. We see a lot of people that need resources to get back on their feet. So I'm part, trying to partner, if I can find a great fund, part of it, with the Lawrence County Columbus Library, to split a social worker to work between our libraries, to have someone who's there half the week to help connect people with all these resources, because we just don't have the staff to also do that. And we're doing it already, and we're stretched very, very thin. But it's these kind of things, these kind of partnerships, reaching out and working, we've been working in parks, it's great, we haven't gotten a chance to talk, been real busy, but we've been trying to work everywhere in the community we can, but there's only so much we can do.
How did your fundraiser do?
It went extremely well. Last year, we made, we got more sponsorships last year, so, but we sold more tickets this year. So this year, it raised about half as much money. Last year, we raised cash dollars, we raised about $18,000. This year, we raised about $9,000, $10,000. In kind, though, last year, we raised about $34,000, $35,000, and this year, it was more like $16,000, $17,000. So, again, we had fewer sponsorships this year. Actually, if y'all know anybody who does that kind of thing, I'd like to contract someone to handle the sponsorship side of that, because I just don't have the time. That's why I fell off his name.
Talk to Portz.
Oh, yes, I will. But, I don't want to take a two-year time, but I do want to answer all possible questions. This is, and then all of this is, y'all know this, I'm not, I'm not pulling any wool here, it's because we need more funding. I'm still two positions short, I, and just because I have to follow, hell, I'll talk about it, I have to get a little tag on my audit every year that says, "Does not have enough staff to satisfy necessary controls," because I don't have a business manager. I can't afford one. We've contracted out our bookkeeping services now for a little bit each week, but I need a business manager. I need someone who is, is the role of, I need someone who is the role of that. I also need an outreach person. I need someone whose job it is to work in the community to reach out. So those are my two full-time positions I need the most. It's a, it's a, it's a step-by-step process, I know it can't be done immediately, and also, just, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention, because you all are well aware of it, the looming increase in birds, which will also hit me. So, reminder, because sometimes, I'm not saying y'all do, because y'all have never done this, but sometimes, cities and counties don't understand that when they give raises to the rest of their staff, and then don't increase the library so that I can give raises to my staff, that's employees that are funded by y'all that also don't get a raise. It's very important to remember that. And I, my staff are working on peanuts. So, I'm not doing gloom. I'm, we're doing, I think we're doing great work. I hope y'all think we're doing great work, and I hope y'all help us do more great work.
I, I do want to say, I think y'all have really stepped up your game. There are lots of activities that I see there that are talked about in the community. I think that's a really great thing, so.
I, I'm actually sad, because people ask me about things we're doing, and I'm like, "Oh, I remember that on the calendar." I, I can't even keep up with them all myself, because there's just so much going on, and that's a great problem to have. I have incredible staff, that we are incredibly blessed and lucky to have, working for us, who are passionate, who care, who want absolutely the best for all of Starkville and October County. So, hopefully that will continue in the new staffing that I'm having to hire for. In fact, I'm going back to the office right after this to make calls, to set up interviews for a couple of positions that are empty.
Do y'all do any coordinating, you're talking about outreach, do you do any coordinating with, like, the Boys and Girls Club, for example, or Dale King Center?
We do. Our coordinating with them typically, though, is we make sure they know what our programming is, and they tend to bus kids in.
Okay.
It was a little less this year, I'm not going to lie, the change in the summer for the school year kind of drew some people for a loop, but we're all adjusting.
Yeah.
I have no complaints, but it did take some adjusting, so, some of the groups maybe that have come in the past weren't able to bus, like Boys and Girls Club was able to bring less this year, but we typically work with them in that capacity.
Okay.
Well, I'm, I'm a huge library fan, as, as you probably have noticed, but I'm glad to see the expanded programming, glad to see that y'all are accomplishing as much as you do with the funds that we make available. I'll be honest, I always thought most of their money came from the state or the federal government. I didn't realize it was us, so that was an educational moment for me. And I also appreciate your willingness to embrace new things that the library can do, and new services that they can provide, because there, as I say all the time, libraries aren't just for books anymore, they're so much more than that.
It's very rare that I say no to an opportunity to work with anybody, because we can do most things. I love, I, I, I serve on the board for Rotary here in Starkville. I'm also part of the Starkville Ambassadors Program with the Downtown Partnership, and I love being in those meetings and hearing things. It's happened at the most recent meeting with the partnership. They're like, "We need some other place downtown that small groups can meet." I was like, "The library." Like, "We have a room. We can book it, please come use our space." So it's, it's, I'm, we're still getting the word out there. I'm really surprised all the time by people who don't realize what the libraries do, and all the things we're doing. And I still get, "Oh, I hadn't heard y'all were doing that." I'm like, "Please follow us on Facebook, please, please."
Well, you're on Twitter, too, right?
Oh, I think we're, we're on Twitter, we're also on Instagram. Facebook tends to be our biggest avenue, just because that is where the majority of our users are. We have, we have five separate pages for the stuff we're doing. We have one for each branch, plus we have one for children's services, and we have one for local history and genealogy, so.
Any other questions? Any?
Budget, yeah, put a dollar figure with this percentage that we get a library.
Maybe, maybe 1%. A percentage of our budget that goes there.
Put a dollar, put a dollar figure with it.
Yeah, 275, 275 divided by 28 mil, 275,000 divided by 28 million, so about 1%. It's less than a mil, and we can levy a mil for library taxes if we wanted to.
Actually, say it allows you to levy up to four mils, not to 5% for that.
Up to four, four mils.
They, they do, but, go away.
I'm supporting the code. But also, to put it in that perspective, I love talking about this. So nationally, public libraries receive about 2% of tax dollars, and the state of Mississippi is far, far less than that. And, we're the only space in, I tell people, we are the last bastions of democracy, because we are the last space in American culture that you can go and exist without the expectation of buying anything. We're it. And we see, on average, 66% of the population a year. 66% of people have been to their public library in the last year. We're the only organization that takes that few tax dollars and saves that much of the population. That's why we are such a perfect place to partner with other organizations, because people come to us already.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Alderman Vaughn, Alderman Beatty, anything? All right, thank you so much, we appreciate you being here with us, and appreciate all that you do, truly.
Appreciate y'all.
Okay. All right, then we can go through agenda items. So we have two sets of minutes. Mr. Huskisson, you get a thumbs up on those, so consent-worthy items, okay? We have some employee introductions that will be coming up. Is there anything anyone else wants to have on the agenda, so it is permanently referenced? All right, nothing? Public appearances, we don't have any. We do have a public hearing. Mr. McCaskey here, you want to give us just a little bit of a briefing on that one?
So this is variance 2308, it's for, for University Drive. It's going to be with cadence at a merger, but they are essentially placing a new building, there's a bearing, I wasn't sure most of you all seen, but essentially, this variance is basically for the block with frontage requirements. They say that there are some difficulties regarding the drop in grade on the front of the property, it goes up in 12 feet in front, all the way to the back, and then also, they were wanting to leave their handicap accessible stalls up closer to the front of the actual site, that way people can easily get to the bank. So their variance was actually unanimously approved by the Board of Adjustments and the Fields, and is basically just asking for a minor reduction, so that way they can have that outward exit onto University Drive.
Okay, all right, well, we will have a public hearing on it, and, and that'll be part of it, but I just didn't want to, I did want to let you kind of give the board a brief thumbnail sketch, so, all right, thank you. And then we can skip number A, that was under Mayor's business, because that is in anticipation that we might find ourselves with a, a rough idea of what we want to do today that we can put forward for advertisement. My goal, guys, just to be clear, is I would love for us not to have a special call meeting in August, if we can, if we cannot do that. But if we can't reach any kind of accommodation that will allow Ms. Harden to advertise, then we probably will end up with a special call.
Mayor, do you know what the other four, all of them want to do?
I have talked to a couple of others, and they are willing to move forward, but it's going to be something we will just take up on Tuesday and see if the vote is there for that.
What I was saying, before we moved to approve a tax increase, I mean, I was, I mean, I wish we'd had more boardroom today in attendance, so we can kind of get, kind of get a lay of the land before we go into Tuesday's meeting.
This would be just, well, and that's why, we're going to put a blank on there, and it would be just strictly for advertising. And if we don't want to do it, if the board don't want to do it, when we get to, to Tuesday night, then we won't do it, and we'll end up with a special call, a work session, oh, I'm sorry, a special call meeting to take it up, so.
Would, would a special call meet, you think we'd have better attendance than a special call meet, than we had this morning, I mean?
Well, this is a work session. I had thought that Alderman Rupp was going to be here, I had not heard from Alderman Brooks, I knew the Vice Mayor was not going to be here, but I have had a chat with Alderman Rupp, I've had a chat with the Vice Mayor, so I have an inkling of how they're leaning, but again, until it comes down to a vote with a, an amount in the slot that can be negotiated out, let's say, or talked about on Tuesday night, then I don't have an answer, so. But, we don't have to talk about it now, we can talk about this after we go through the budget. So if we can go through the rest of it, we'll do that, and then we'll come back, we'll circle, circle back to it. Airport, Mr. Lincoln is here. Anything about these airport grants that we need to know about, or the lease, any of that?
I'll straight.
Okay, all pretty straightforward, normal business. Okay, so, one is a multimodal airport grant, consent for that one, and then a lease addendum for the airport in circle S for an additional lease space, consent for that one, and then consideration of renewing the insurance services, consent for that, all right. Under community development planning, we've got reappointing Mr. Verdel to Ward Seven to planning and zoning, consent for that one, he did submit his letter of interest, so. And then the special event request, so let me, let me give a little background on the special event request. This is Bulldog Bash, which came up as a point of discussion at our last work session. Immediately following our work session, I got, I sent an email to Dr. Regina Hyatt Young, Young Hyatt, Young Hyatt?
Hyatt.
I think it's Young Hyatt, I'm sorry, anyway, Dr. Hyatt. And she and I met yesterday with some of her staff, and she said they are willing to share, so, they are, they are going to accommodate. Now, that does not give an absolute amount, because we don't have it yet. I mean, we have it, but she's just asked for, for verification. I've asked the department heads to each give me a special, just a letter to show what that is. She wanted to break out of labor and materials or expenses that would show labor and equipment and that sort of thing, and so they, Mr. Smiley has done that, Mr. Kemp's going to do that, the Chief is going to do that, both Chiefs will do that. And so she has asked that I submit that to her, and they have agreed to participate with us on it. So, while I don't think we should count it as revenue, I think we should count it as a goodwill, so, just FYI.
So, what, what did, I know the Chief's gone, well, what was the expense that we had, had thought we were incurring on those?
Well, it started at, I think the original request was 45. Do you still have the original one?
Yes, it was a 45.
And, and Mr. Smiley went back in and reworked his numbers. I, I asked the sanitation department, the police department, and street department to go back and rework their numbers, just to make sure that they were where they wanted to be, and Mr. Smiley choked it down a bit, and he did, he did a real, the in-depth analysis and came back about $4,000 less. So it's, we're at 40 now instead of the original, which I think was 45.
It's somewhere on the screen.
Is it on the screen? Well, kind of, that and, that and other kinds of news, so whoever can, whoever can bring us out of that would be good.
See, it's not me.
Joel, are you working it there, dog? Okay, so it is now at 40 total, 41 actually is closer to. So they have reworked it, and I will submit those, but my point to that was that they have agreed to participate, as the board had asked me to go back and, and do that. So they've come forward and said they will do so. So I would like to suggest that this might be consent-worthy.
I think that we all, that we get a proposal from them, we all, and, and I would hope they could come back with a proposal, uh, look to us by Tuesday night, and that we're not necessarily consent this, that we know what they're willing to participate. I do know that, how much is their, to, how much, Mayor, how much is their 20%?
About half a million. And she had said they would take it out of their 20%, which is why she said that they would be willing to go in half, and I think there's a good faith opportunity there.
So they, you think they would go 50%?
That's, that was what we, that was what we discussed.
So 20,000.
And that's, and that's a good faith, but again, I do, I would not say put it in a revenue line, but, but they have shown that they will go good faith with us. All they're asking for is the details associated with what makes that up, whether labor and equipment.
I would say, if we, if, if they're asking us to provide a detail of what the cost is, if we hold this off, the agenda, until we know we've got a commitment from them based on what we send to them of, of one-half of that cost, I won't say in writing, but a commitment, more than just kind of a good faith thing, and then we put it back on there and we can, we can, we can approve it just like that. But I think it just in good, if both parties act in good faith, that we should, should, I think tie the amount that they contribute with a 50% or whatever, if that's, if they agree to that, tie that to the approval of this Bulldog Bash.
And, and I, I take your point. I, I would say, if Alderman Beatty wants to let this remain off consent, we let it remain off consent, and then take a vote Tuesday night to see if people want to move forward with Bulldog Bash, or if they want to wait and see how this other piece works out.
I think it's just good, good fiscal, good fiscal, good, good government, whatever, for us to have. The Mississippi State, we do fire contracts, we do civil contracts, we do one stuff, and this would be something where we ought, we're going to have some type, some, something in writing where they pay, going forward, pay us 50% of the, of the cost incurred for that, and I think we ought to have some kind of agreement drawn up, and, and that be tied to, to the Bulldog Bash, and that's just, that's fair.
I think that's, I think that's something we can vote on Tuesday night.
And they're not, it's not as if they don't have the money, they have the money, they paid the whole thing, but, but at least have, they had the funds to be able to do that, it's just a, a matter of both parties coming to the table and agreeing to do that. I, I think that's reasonable.
Well, I think, I think it's something we can vote on Tuesday night, and, and see how, how much people want to go down that path. I think you've also opened a can of worms about whether we ask other, other groups to start participating in, in kind services. The Arts Festival, for instance.
Why shouldn't we?
The Arts Festival, so, so, and, and that's a, that's a group that doesn't have a half million dollars in revenue.
Well, but sources that have source of money, are they, they're?
So you're going to pick and choose winners, you say, in terms of?
I'm going to pick and choose ones that got a half million dollars in tax money generated by the city staff.
Not going to treat people consistently, you're going to?
All right, well, let, we'll, we'll leave it off consent, and then we will, obviously, we'll have to take it up on Tuesday night, so. Engineering, Mr. Burnett, anything in particular, these are, both of these are rejecting the construction bids. We had how many days to approve them?
I think there's 45 or 60.
Yeah, so, yeah, we're going to need to reject the bids and move forward with some sort of, some sort of plan, which we're working on, so. At this point in time, rejecting the bids are what we need to do, so consent on both of those, okay? Professional services agreement with Neil Schaefer, this is for the design of Old Mayhew Road for, I think they're offering two roundabouts and a three-way stop, or?
That's right, this is a consentful design.
You're right.
I didn't want to sign us up for a full-blown design until we know kind of what is going to cost construction in the first place. So, they'll come in for a work session, give a presentation, and then we can make a decision.
Okay, so, consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay. Consideration of accepting the proposed warranty deeds, this is the right Consideration of accepting the proposed warranty deeds, this is the right-of-way for BBQ Road, so, we've got, we've gotten all those, which is, which is great. Plainstocket, and then the fiscal year audit and engagement letter, those are in the packet, all right, so, consent for that one? Okay. Fire Department Hazardous Materials Grant, anything about that one, do we have any Fire Department, nobody, no Fire Department here, so, it's a, it's a grant, so, and then three portable radios program, so, all right, I'm assuming that's in, that's in the budget, so.
Those radios are being bought with that grant.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm not seeing where it says grant, so, okay, let's put that, let's get that put in there, please. Okay.
Here's a grant.
I'm sorry?
Says a grant.
Yes, mhm, so she's going, she's going to get that put in there, all right. So, Mr. Ashford, any of these that we need to know anything about, they're all, with the exception of item six is, they're all replacement hires, so, we have residential drivers for sanitation environmental services, consent for that one. Accountant in utilities, okay, wastewater sludge operator in utilities, consent, Gary Rivers is a grounds maintenance worker for airport. Mr. Reyes is a police radio operator dispatcher, and then we have consideration of the discipline recommended by the Chief Ballard, do we consent for that one?
Yes.
And then hiring for Assistant Court Clerk Ms. Holmes, she is coming back to us, which she was, yeah, good hire, so, all right, parks, we have awarded the lowest and best bid from Gentry Signs for the cornerstone light pole banners. And then T and M Phase Three change order for additional irrigation, electrical panel, concrete work, et cetera, so no cost to that, that's a swap-out, and then a Phase Two change order for $2,500, and, Brandon, would you be so kind as, explain exactly what that change order is to do, I didn't quite understand it.
So it's, it was, they've got original bulk for soil testing to try to determine.
Okay, so it's soil testing?
Yeah, and then when they got, when it got came back, it was higher.
Okay. Can we insert soil testing in there, please, Lisa, that way we'll know as we go back to it, so, all right, consent for that one, all right. Under police, we have, let's see, we have purchase of a vehicle, and, and that is swap-out for one that was wrecked, so, consent for that one. Purchasing the drones, we've got, we've got grants for, for drones, and I was talking with the Chief yesterday about the goal for having the number of drones, which is going to be cool if we can, if we can get grants for those items, so, consent for that one. The, except the 100% reimbursable alcohol and drug impairment driving grant, $100,000, yeah, that pays for two officers, I believe it is, and then approval to accept the 100% reimbursable police traffic, yes ma'am?
Can we go back to, see, is that a lesser amount than we've gotten in the past?
It wasn't even 100, yeah, yeah, okay, and then Police Traffic Services Grant for the seatbelt speeding and child restraint enforcement, consent for that one? All right, under Code Enforcement, we've got calling for public hearings for structures located at North Long Street, if you recall, Alderman, this is the, this is the piece of property right next door that has all the stuff on it, woman lives in New York, and we can't do it, do it any other way, because we can't serve her personally, so, that's a public hearing for that purpose, consent for that one? And then a public hearing for structures located on, on North Long Street as well, same, same issue. And then on Everglade, that's the house that is, the back of it faces Long, and the front of it is off of Everglade, so, looking to make that better, consent for that one?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, good. And then authorization to advertise for bag, for bids for the garbage bags, so, all right. Utilities Department, authorization for the, well, Mr., Mr., anything on here we need to be, be alert to, routine stuff?
Yeah, purchase of some lab equipment that's necessary for wastewater, second item that we did, we were successful in receiving a grant for hazard mitigation to do the backup generator at our main office. Third item is to purchase a vehicle that had already been previously, replace a vehicle that had already been previously approved, this was surplus, but we've been having difficulty with securing it, and then the last item is to put a building.
An insert, okay, all right, consent for? Consent for those? Okay. All right, and that takes us to the end of the agenda, so we can circle back. Nice, nice, nice arrival there, so we can circle back to the budget. Mr. Corbin has reworked some numbers based on the additional salary study information which you all received, which Nav is here, if there are any questions, if there are any questions of him, is it related, did you get one? Okay.
Before we, before we let him tee up, can, can I talk about the things that, that I've provided?
Sure.
Because one of the things we're going to be talking about is a potential millage increase, I thought some, some history, some information about how much a mill costs an individual taxpayer, that sort of thing, would be, would be useful, so, we always start with your basic $100,000 house, and if you have homestead exemption, and there are three different millages in there, none of which I'm advocating for, they're just there as numbers to show you that anywhere from 1.87 mills to two mills, or a house with homestead exemption would cost, with a, with a true value, not a market value, but in appraisal of the assessor's world, a true value of $100,000 would cost anywhere from 18.7, $18.70 to $20. If you're over 65 or disabled and qualify for that additional tax exemption, then that cost would be $4.68 to $5, and if you don't have homestead exemption, if it's commercial property, or if it's a second home, it, it, it goes up essentially by 50% because it's a different asset class, so that would be 18, $28 to $30. So that's just a calculation that people ask about, it's, it's not rocket science arithmetic, but it confuses people, so, so, so I wanted to give you that. The next page, Joel, if you could put up the millage history graph there, that first one, this is a, a graph of Starkville's millage rate, and, and I've added the inflation factors in there from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, so, so, you'll, you'll see that we've just gradually, over time, had, had an increase in millage, this goes back 20 years, the bumps typically are going to come with some major capital project. In '09, for instance, there was a bond issue for street improvements. When you get to '16 and '17, it's police station and the link bonds, but, but those are generally what's going to cause that. I've added in the inflation so that you can see that while, while for years, the city talked about living on organic growth, our millage increase has not kept up with, with inflation or organic growth, so, that's just, just, just a little history lesson for anybody who's interested. And then another thing that people like to know is how do we compare with other cities, and so on that second one, Joel, there's a tab that's Millage Chart, yep, that one, these are populations for everybody from 20,000 to 36,000 in the state of Mississippi, and what the millage rates are, and, and I chose that range because those are probably the most comparable to us, I chose 36,000 as opposed to 35, because Tupelo's a little bit over 35, and I wanted to, to get it in there, but you'll see that we are the fourth lowest in our, in our peer group in terms of, of millage, millage assessments, and so we're fourth lowest there. The, the question that always comes up concurrent with that is, but housing values are different in every, every municipality, so, the next tab over, the millage value, compares our millage to the median house price in, in all the various cities there, and you'll see that we, we still are about the fourth lowest, if you, if you adjust for house values, and then, and then the question is, well, how can Ridgeland and Pearl and Madison and towns like that work with a lesser millage rate and lesser property tax, you would think, but it's not true, than, than Starkville, and this, this shows you the, blue is the sales tax collections for each of those cities that are less than us, and the property taxes for each of those that were less than us, Oxford because it's so close to us, and Tupelo just, just for, just for, you know, fun.
Just to see?
Yeah, so you can see that there, there are towns out there that have a lot more money than us, and it shows.
Well, we do, I think we do the most with the least these days, and that's not something that we've been able to say over the years until recently, so. All right, so, any questions about what she put out there before we moved to Web?
Thank you, Bud, that's some good information.
Well, it, it, you know, people, people are always concerned, and, and they, we do tend to look at just that millage number, and it doesn't tell the whole story, so, I thought this might come a little closer to helping to tell that story.
Okay, all right, Mr. Corbin?
I've provided you, Joel, a quick three-page, it's just a continuation of the one we started last meeting, if you look at page two, in the middle, it says, uh, previous meetings, that's where we had it, and everything below has been kind of reconfigured, I included a couple of the items we found, I'll, I'll budget change, and the pan, using the interest that the ARBA money is generating, instead of providing a bunch from the general fund, as well as a couple other things to get to kind of a subtotal of where we're at now, and then the final page has some of these other items still in the budget, but could be considered for cuts if, if necessary to get us to a balanced budget.
And, and I, I'd like to say that after hearing Mr. Carter this morning, and after some additional information about the parks, I, I feel like we're going into fiscal year 24 with a very bare-bones contribution or, or budget for both of those entities.
For the parks?
Parks and, and library.
They had, they had the parks, I was looking at what the parks had grown since I came on board, it was one, contribution to the general fund was 1.209 million, what we're tracking at the end of this budget year is 2 million, that's $800,000 more, contribution to the general fund I'm looking at, net general fund contribution to parks and rec, we're tracking through, throughout the end of, end of September, a little over 2 million, if you look at the contribution to the general fund, 1819, that's when I came on board fiscal '19, is 1.29, 2 million, so, I guess I'm saying, I understand that, that y'all proposed to take the, those management fees for SFM and move them into, to, to the parks and rec money to offset that, which are, for the, for the parks and rec budgets, about $200,000, that, maybe that reduces to 1.8, we're still up 600,000 in four years, I'm concerned about the growth of the budget, of the growth of the parks and rec department on the, on the budget side, and, and that's, you know, that's, if we're up 600,000, that's, that's, that's two mills right there, if you're looking at terms of what, you know, what a mill generates inside the seed limits.
I thought we had budgeted one, about 1.4, a little over 1.4 for fiscal '24 for the parks.
But matter of the budget, what we end up in, 3.3.
We have, we budgeted for, it's about 1.475 roughly for?
24, and that's, that's what I'm saying, I think that that number's probably low.
So if you decrease from what we ain't going to end up with, having spent from the general fund, parks and rec, to 1.4, 1.5, was it, 1.45?
Yes.
Where's that money?
I'd say 1.5.
And we operate level service, where's that money going to come from?
I'm not following your question.
All right, right now, if we, we track on out through September, our general fund contribution to the parks and rec department is a little over, will be a little over 2 million, a little better, and if, if we're going to budget for 1.4, 1.5, where is that? And I know part of you going to shift into the 1% money.
Significant portion of it.
200,000, what I understand, so where's that other 300,000 going to come from?
Where did the 200,000 come from?
Basically, what you were shifting, it would be going to the 1 or 2%, 2% money, I guess.
So, so if we leave the cornerstone management fees out of it, because it's been paid from 1%, 2% money all along, you, you say that this year we'll be at 1.8 million for just parks and rec operation, excluding cornerstone management fees, we'll be at 1.8, that, that is inflated for a couple of reasons, one is, the big reason is that we've had expenses related to cornerstone, but we've not had revenues because we've not been able to be, be open and, and have those revenues recognized, so that's where the majority of it is going to come from.
The 200,000.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's where the majority of it is. The other, the other piece is transferring the parks and rec management fee over to the 1%, 2% money, so if we were comparing adjusted numbers to adjusted numbers, we've got about $1,005,000 in budget this year, we would be at a little over $1,006,000, we've got $1,005,000 for fiscal '24, we're going to be at about $1,006,000 if we make all those adjustments for this year, and, and if you take, take revenues in, it would, we'd be more in the same boat, but what my concern is that cornerstone is going to be expensive to operate, it was never intended to be like an enterprise fund so that it would fully fund itself, parks and, and rec cost recovery for just a parks program, not, not pools, water parks, tournament facilities, that sort of thing, 10% is, is kind of a, a number, but, but with a tournament facility, and cornerstone is closer to that, you can bump that number up to maybe 30% that you think you're going to collect of those operations.
And Chairman Speaker, you go, is it, will the general fund continue to increase its contributions to parks and rec to cover the cost in?
All I'm saying is, all I'm saying is, I think that over the course of the year, we're going to find that we did not budget enough for parks, I think over the course of the year, we would say that we have underfunded the library, and I'm just rolling those things out there to say those things.
But, I was about 20 feet to that.
I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not saying we have to increase either of those numbers, but I'm saying that it's something we need to be cognizant of as we approve the budget as it's currently standing, and know that, know that, much like PERS increasing over next year and the year after, these are just things that, that are, are out there hanging over our head.
In other words, you, you said we, we probably on the budget cornerstone, and you anticipate that we, we will?
At some point.
Well, we will gain.
Well, it's, and at some point, we're going to have to put a little more money into, from the general fund.
General fund.
And I'm not saying we have to do it in this budget.
I'm just saying, if you look back, go three years, I think the largest growth in each department, and I'd be willing to step out on a limb, is not police, fire, I think it's the largest growth in, of each department in the general fund is parks and rec, and rec.
Police.
I, I will say this too, our parks and rec department now, as, on the contract, is basically a cost plus, in, in the contracting world, in a rental, in a rental property world, it'd be a triple on the end of the lease, where you have a base lease, and everybody pays everything, can pay all the cost over that, we get billed by parks and rec for services rendered, and, and we, we write them a check, so, we don't necessarily go in with a budget that says you're going to provide this amount of service for this amount of money, we just do stuff, we bill them, they bill us, and we pay, that's cost-plus kind of stuff, and so, that's the stuff, that's where we're going to kind of, I think, to keep this from growing in order, larger as a percentage of our budget than the part, than the police and fire and street and engineering, you name it, the general fund stuff, we're going to need to get a handle on that, and I, I mean, we've got a big part now, but at the same time, I don't know whether, to, I don't know, but that, it's, that particular budget has grown significantly, and, and we need to watch that, and that's, that's one of the things now that with the overage on that, we're looking at having to have a tax increase in our general fund.
Well, what do you think of cornerstone to go in for?
Well, I'm hoping that we will have a grand opening before the end of the fiscal year, I had hoped we'd have Labor Day, but again, getting stuff done, getting it out there, making sure it's ready to go, I think we're probably looking at closer to the middle of September, first of October, but Mr. Dougherty's here, I wanted to make sure he was here, because I wanted him to give us an idea that we've got tournaments that are scheduling, they're scheduling up next year.
Yep.
Most of the weekends for the fall are, are scheduled?
Yes.
Yes.
And so we're, you know, we go from zero to everything, hopefully, very shortly, and that revenue, while it will never offset, will keep it from growing beyond a certain level expectation as we go, as, as it matures and as we get into the business.
And, and if I can, you've, you've rolled out our, our numbers there. The nice people at Oxford at M-Trade Park were, were kind enough to share what their budget is for M-Trade Park. And that's just M-Trade. That is not their whole Ryle Parks and Rec system up there. And their, their budget for this year's $3.5 million.
And they get 1.1, 1.2 in revenue to offset that?
That 30%.
So it, it was, it's, parks are never going to pay for themselves. They are an entity, they are an opportunity, and hopefully they will bring in revenue associated with hotels and sales tax and all the things that we want to grow to bring people into town and to keep our weekends all through the year busy. And, and that's just, that was why we built it. I mean, that was the goal, was to have, have a constant flow of people in the community who come in to eat and, and spend money and enjoy themselves and come back and come to school and do all those things that make a holistic approach to a community that people wanna, wanna be in. And so it was never, you know, we will get it hopefully on the backside with the hotel, hotel and, and food and sales tax, but, you know, being able to absolutely tie it and quantify it to that, it's gonna be tough.
And people choosing to live here as opposed to West Point or Columbus or whatever. The other, and, and I didn't, I didn't mean to say, I just wanted to say that I think it's, I think it's a number that given that cornerstone is gonna come on board, that there's gonna be increased expenses related to cornerstone, I, I think it, it's just gonna be tight. It's gonna be tight. And, and the library, we didn't budget any increase for the library this year, so.
Except the 20,000 for the AC unit, right?
Yeah, but that's, that's capital and not operations. We didn't budget anything for library operations. And, and Mr. Carter's right. It's, we, we, we talk about a raise for our employees, he's, his employees same boat, but we're asking them to, to function in the same budget year over year.
I guess what I was gonna, I'm sorry.
Until I say a tax, we're about to get some more hotels than you tell me hotels.
Well, then they're talking about, about constructing them. There's, there's a, there is a recognized market need and I think that we have, have someone out there who's already looking at picking a place and, and doing exactly that. And I would expect more than one, to be perfectly frank, as time goes on.
That's what I hope.
And then again, that's part of that, that's part of that growth and development that I come, that I believe comes with having a premier park facility, so.
And, and I don't wanna beat parks to death. I'm not suggesting that we raise the amount that's in there for, for the budget right now. I'm just, just saying that it's something that we're gonna have to monitor closely through the year and, and.
But part of our tax increase this year is because of increased costs. I mean, and the other things, part of it, the part of it is our, our, our increase in the cost of running, I mean, the parks and rec department, that's just part of it. The other part that is, is looming and I, I, I beat this dead horse to death is, is TIPS. And we've got, we're gonna have those, we've got TIPS coming on this year that are gonna take money out of our, out of our, we're gonna start servicing debt on TIP bonds. Mark Casper is gonna come to us sometime in the year and ask us to issue those bonds. And when we do, I think you've estimated, Alderman Sis Trump, that the debt service only is it 15 or 20 years?
15.
15 years bonds, it's $400,000 a year. Now, half that money's coming from the county. They're gonna reimburse us, no, that's by 4,000, our part, 4,000, our part.
$400,000 is, is probably the max. The county might be on the hook for maybe 95 to 100,000.
So the 400 for us. All right, and then the academy sports is 135,000. And so we're up over half a million dollars. And in case no one knows this, I think they do, maybe do, that comes out of our general operating budget, that we may mainly get our revenue from sales and property tax. That's gonna come right off the top of that. And, you know, we can get into arguments about whether Triangle Shopping Center will be here if we didn't have Grand Tent, probably would be, you know, or something. But, but, but those are gonna be, right now, we have the money in our budget. We're, we're receiving the sales tax right now for, from Triangle Shopping Center and Academy Sports. And two years, at least, well, I know, in two budget years from now, that money will not be, they will be being paid out at debt service. And it's not the only one. There's, there's a list of TIPS, I don't know which ones, we got Milton Market, we got Cotton Mills, we got, you know, Nicholas, we still got Nicholas on there. And, and so we got a lot of TIPS and, and they're costing us money. And I would encourage the board to be very careful in how we grant tax increment financing and tax incentives to developers going forward. And they're gonna come here and ask us for that. And that also would extend to me, to the downtown project where we're gonna, we'd have, we got, we passed something three, three months ago, it has no, even has no rules or guidelines to it. But it's a tax incentive on, I guess, the increment or is it on, or we'll go up on the new?
It's at the lower.
At the lower, is it on the, all the taxes, just on the increase?
It's a, that, that ordinance allows us to exempt any or all. So it could be the incremental, it could be the whole thing, it would be evaluated in a property project.
Well, I suggest to, is to the board is when we do that, there will be a time when we come back to the, to the board, to the budget time, and we will be short revenue because we did that. And we need to understand that as we grant these, these TIPS and these tax incentives to, to the businesses and things.
Alderman, let me give Alderman Rupp, he had something he wanted to say and I actually cut him off. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't cut you off. Go ahead.
And Alderman Rupp, before you go, we're talking about Mississippi State now offering something on the, on the Bulldog Bash thing. It's probably half of what, you know, and, I mean, I, I guess that's fair. I'd like to, I, I suggest that we get it right before we approve Bulldog, Bulldog Bash. I think it's just good business that both parties come together and, and, and agree to something before we start approving Bulldog Bash without a commitment from them. Right now, it'd just be a good faith thing, you know, and.
I like operating in good faith.
I saw a recycling, I saw the good faith thing on recycling a few years ago, go south. So I, I'd rather have something right from her or something like that.
Well, and we've, we've got that on the agenda. It's not a consent, it can be just, it can be voted on Tuesday night. So.
Well, I had said at the last work session, I agreed with Hamp on that and my, my thoughts have not changed.
Well, and they have come forward and said they would.
Let's move on.
All right, both of you. Both of you. All right. Mr. Corbin, anything, anything else you wanna go through as we're?
Um, yeah, they did go a couple of the other little changes. We're bumping our budget for the, our interest income on our investments next year. They did a rate increase this week. We're expecting another rate increase, so we felt comfortable bumping that a little bit up now that we're down a little closer.
On page two.
And the mayor yesterday, I think, offered to take out.
I didn't offer it, I didn't even know it was in there. I told Mr. Ashford not to put me in there, but he did. He was definitely taking that one out, yes, absolutely.
We knocked that off.
And I, the mayor's, the mayor's giving back her salary increase. I would recommend that the board do the same. It's, it's, it's very little. It would be about $6,400 total for all seven board members. So I, I would say that we, that we move that from the potential increases to not necessary.
I can't speak for the rest of the board, but Brooks in, I'll give ours back.
So Alderman Brooks?
Yeah, I'm in whatever he says.
All right.
I was late to the meeting here, so I'm just trying to get follow up. I wonder if there's any way, we're down at 594. And if we did, if we could get that thing down to a mill.
To a mill?
Mm-hmm. May not can.
Well, where, where would you like to cut, Alderman?
280,000, that's what we, we would.
45,000 for Bulldog Bash, I thought was it. And, I'm sorry, I just think they'll take, take off some expense on that. Forty, I'm sorry, not 45, 40,000.
They said they'd pay part of it, not the whole now, so.
But we're the ones that are, we're, it's not, it's really, it could be non-negotiable because we're the ones hosting it. But that, that being said, you know, we show the fund balance, I know that C. Clark and Chief Nizov, they cross out, the, the fund balance is projected to start at 2.75 million.
And, and where is it right now in the budget this current year? 2.4 million.
We started a year at 2.4.
But it's in there, revenues of 2.75 and it ends at 2.75. So it should start at 2.4 million and end at 2.4 million if we're rolling it over from one year to the next.
There's your closure right there.
Well, that's, it's an in and out. It doesn't impact the, it doesn't impact the amount that's needed from property taxes unless you say you're gonna spend that money down.
It does if you say that your, if the fund balance is going from 2.4 to 2.75.
But it's not, it's not, I mean, we're, we're, I mean, this is purely projecting exactly where we end up, but we'll end up closer to 1K if we continue.
Well, we overbudgeted for, for sales tax, right? We anticipated.
But with some other things to, we gave that a little.
You, you dropped that down some to what you think we live reasonable doing sales tax revenue next year, based on what we're doing of current, that stuff, expectation.
With good reason. Do you have anything you'd like to add? Alderman Rupp would like to hear from you.
I know you would.
Okay. I try. There you go.
Wouldn't you say you agree with me?
No.
Yeah, of course.
Yeah, I'll do, all right, y'all don't pull that. All right. Have we got any other pieces of information out there that isn't, that are not, that we can consider? So Alderman Beatty, you had, where else did you wanna cut?
Well, I think that since Alderman Rupp, Alderman Brooks here, I mean, the mayor's gonna ask us potentially to vote on, on the village rate Tuesday night.
Oh, no. To advertise.
Advertise, well, I mean.
Well, you, well, you advertise so that you can then hear from people and if you, if you wanna make a change, you can make a change.
It starts, it starts processing though.
Yes.
And so I, I thought that we'd kinda give framework today and you kinda wanted us to do that.
If you can, yes.
You know, we felt like a mill, mill and a half, two mills, whatever, would get us in the money, get us, close this thing and, and, and be comfortable with it by Tuesday night so that we can, can move on without, you know, because Tuesday nights are not really places to, this is much better place to discuss stuff than the board table Tuesday night.
Well, and, and the goal being, you know, to have at least some understanding of, of where everyone feels like we can be. I don't, I personally don't think you're gonna get down to a mill because I think we've cut back in a number of places. I think we've committed to do Colonial Hills drainage and I think we should go ahead and do Colonial Hills drainage.
Well, finish, it's already, I mean.
Well, but we've got, that too. I mean, rather than stopping at midstream. So, you know, to me, leaving that in makes perfect sense. The, the salary survey I think came in at a reasonable amount and I think, I personally think that's what we ought to do. Increase funding to SMART. I'm perfectly good with that because I think SMART serves our community in a way that we certainly don't, but if we tried to, not unlike the fire contract, if we tried to serve transportation for our community, I think we would be hard pressed to get anything done.
As a university, that's a good comparison, Mayor. I appreciate you bringing that up because that, that, that kinda segues into the Bulldog Bash thing. If, if, if MSU had to build and equip and staff a fire department with a class three, protection class rating, 675,000 wouldn't even, wouldn't start what it would cost him to do.
Well, which is.
So it's a bargain.
And, and the SMART, I think it's a three or four million dollar SMART deal is, is a huge. So anyway, just trying to say that I think there are things that, I'll, I'll, I'll come back to you. Remember what you wanted to say, I'll come back to you. And then the, you know, the library, they're gonna, if that, if we can't start providing for that air conditioning unit when it comes up and it, and it goes, it's gonna be a, probably a $25,000 or more new system or maybe a $50,000 new system. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be limp along and, and prepare for it now or get it all at once. So, and the Main Street landscaping, Alderman Rupp can speak to that one. And, you know, I don't think any of us need raises because I think all of us are doing, doing fine. So anyway, that's where I am on, on all those particular elements of discussion. So Alderman Rupp.
I forgot. No, I, so we started at 2.8, that was the number we started at. So, and we've gotten it down to approximately 600,000. So thank you all for that, Sandra. So I.
And those guys.
Yeah, everybody, sorry. I think we're close, right? And I can support anything from the 1.87 million down to a mill and a half. I don't think we could get below that. But I would challenge my colleagues that if, you know, if you can't support that, please offer up the legitimate cuts to get where we need to be. Because I, I certainly don't wanna vote for a tax increase, but I think thanks to these numbers and graphs, I, I see why where we are. And I think a good faith effort has been made to get it down under 600,000 there. So as much as I don't want to, I can support the, like 1.87 mil or if somebody can go lower.
And it takes us to 32 even. And, and everybody knows, nobody likes raising taxes. I mean, every, would I love to just cut it all out? Of course we would, but that's not reality. So I appreciate you. Thank you.
What guarantees do we have that when we come back to budget table next year in the Parks and Rec Department, we won't be looking at another, we will not have expended another 200, 300,000 in, in the Parks and Rec Department? It's gonna be more, that's gonna, you know, put that, give us that gap, we'll contribute to the gap in our thing. And I mean, I guess I'm saying is, we stick and adhere to every, in every department we have to budgets, code's budget, you know, police budget, March's budget, Chief Yarber's budget, all that with the section of one thing. And we got, we got cost plus over in, in Parks and Rec and we likely gonna come back and it'll be, we'll be up, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars next year, which is gonna contribute to, you know, where do we find the money next year to do that? And I guess what I'm saying is, why couldn't we have some kind of, of cost budget kind of caps or something on, on what we, what we spend in the Parks and Rec budget? And, and if we have to do an amendment later on year, we do it at the same time. Right now, we just kinda, we kinda shoot from the hip.
Well, we can say no to any of, any of the improvements we're making. We can say no to spending at the pool, we can say no to spending at J.L. King, we can say no to spending at McKee, we can say no to pickleball court overlays, we can say no to all those things. But that's not what we wanna do. We wanna have a, a great park system throughout the community and when we do, we gotta pay for it, guys. And, and cornerstone is, is new territory for us. We've never done this before, we've never done it at the level we're talking about. And I think that's part of it is we've got a learning curve. And so as we go along, we can say no to some of those things that come along, but we've made some significant improvements over the last year or two to all of our parks and we wanna continue to do that. We're gonna do it with bond funds.
Yeah, this, this stuff that I have general operating.
No, I understand, but, but then you've got the maintenance that goes with it and then you've got the little stuff, you know? Who knew that we were gonna have? Yeah, who knew we were gonna have some of the.
So we can't reimburse over budgeted without coming to the board.
That's right. But, but when we run out, we come back to the board and we ask for, for an amendment to or to a term?
We do.
We can't just pay bills over and out.
And, and at some point, if the board wants to say no, then the board can absolutely say no.
Let me ask these questions. In the, in the parks budget, general, this contribution from the general fund, what, what did we budget last year?
1.4?
1.7.
And how much are we gonna spend by the end of this budget year from the general fund?
1.8.
No, I mean, from the general fund? Two?
Yeah, we've got, um, sorry.
How much are we gonna spend at the, by the end of this year on, on, out of the general fund on parks?
Out of the general fund, about 1.8 something. And we budget it about 1.5 something out of the general fund.
Well, what, Ms. Corbin, what was that 2.093 million? Did that, why, why is, because it's, the sum sheet I had had.
It's cornerstone management fees and we just transferred 200,000 from, or 240,000 from cornerstone, from the 1%, 2% money. from cornerstone, from the 1%, 2% money over to the general fund and paid the fees out of there. Next year, we're just going to pay the fees directly out of there and not, and get it out of the general fund.
We could miss this year and we probably missed by a good 300,000 to get from 1.5 to 1.8, but, um.
But you're, but this thing I got says net general fund contribution to Parks Department for FY '22, '23, which is this budget year projected, we now, we ain't got there yet, but we projected 2 million, a little over 2 million, 2,31,000.
And, and of that, 240,000 will be reimbursed by the 1%, 2% money.
So it gets us to 1.8.
Like it's 1.8. And then there have been Parks revenues that, that kept that number a little, generally where it is.
Which gets me back to my question. When we overspend by 300,000, do we go back and, and get the board immense, the, the spending of it? The, the increase of that 300,000 that we have to increase the, what we've committed or we budgeted for in the budget, if we overspend in that general, in the general fund by 300,000, we have, it has to come back to the board and say, okay, we're going to incur or pay for, incur the expense and pay for these additional expenses.
And that would come with a budget amendment and it would have a revenue source to go along with it for the board to make a decision about.
What gets me back around to where, well, the point I make with Parks and Rec is we don't have as hard and fast a budget, Parks and Rec, as we do with the police department or fire department.
Well, we do. We say no. I mean, that's, that's the thing. Do we, what do we say no to? And when it comes back to us, we can say no and say, no, you're going to stick within X dollars that were in the original budget. Or we can say, yep, we think it's worth, pick something. We, we think it's worth doing, buying a ramp at the, at the pool or, or we think it's worth buying another batting cage for X or, you know, we can say no.
If you look in your, if you look in your board packet, there will be Parks financial statements and it is a line by line by line item of what their, what their number adds up to. It just isn't run through a different set of books because it's over at SFC. We're looking at the bottom line and how much we have to pay of, to get them to a, a break even point. So, so there is, there is a hard budget for them and they have it broken down just like we have police and fire broken down, but, but their job is to manage to that budget. Our job is to say, we're willing to subsidize to a certain point and, and that's what we do when we budget an amount in the, in the Parks budget line.
And, and we can, going forward, we can certainly highlight those requests and what it is they're going to do. I mean, I thought we had in the past, you know, we're making an, an improvement here, we're making an improvement here, we're doing this over here. So if we need to focus on them more, then we can certainly do that so that we recognize that this is going to be a, a budgetary amendment or a budgetary increase that wasn't necessarily planned for.
And, and things that get over 100,000 ought to be in cap, ought to come out of capital money instead of out of operational things. I mean, I mean, I'll, I'll be first admit, I mean, I thought, you know, I thought the swimming pool meeting, roofs on bill, that, that repairing that, that dressing room, putting roofs on, and I get some stuff to the pumps and that's a hard, over 100,000, but that, that gets into me capital expense money and operational money.
And it comes, and it comes out of the 1%, 2% money and not, not the general fund.
Did this come out, did the market stuff come out and it came out of 1%?
Out of the 1%, 2%.
So this other stuff is just tiki tack. We, we adding 300,000 on by just doing things that where we, our budget has run up 300,000 over in the general money and stuff.
And I said I wasn't going to say this and I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm going to, I'm going to get something to join.
Well, we have.
What's saying we go over budget then? What's saying we go over budget?
Well, and I guess that's the point is, is what we budget for is what we will stay within unless and until the board says, no, we want to do this or no, we want to do that. We think this is important. So whatever it is, we, it looks as though we're going to exceed the budget.
We can stop.
We can stop. We can stop. Exactly.
We can stop.
Yes.
And we're spending a lot of time talking about cornerstone. We have no idea.
What about the city? What about employees? What about the city? What about employees? I mean, we spent a lot of time on cornerstone. We can stop. We don't have to keep going there. We don't have to, we don't have to over budget. We can stop. If they got something in need and we say they don't, we just cannot afford it.
Yes, we can, we can absolutely.
So why we just keep going over the same thing over and over?
Well, I think.
What about employees? What about the city?
Reaching the end.
So, Alvin, what are you comfortable with here? What reins as far as the millage? Where, where do you land?
We going to have to increase the millage. We going to have to.
Does the 1.87?
I'm one that do not believe increase, I don't believe, I don't believe in increase tax.
I know.
And they tell you no, but we going to have to. If we intend to operate the city, we going to have to do it.
Is there a number you're comfortable with? I'm trying to see where we get to the votes so that we can move this forward and just, I'm not holding you to it, but I'm just.
I'm covered with the number that this for us to keep. That's the number.
30 mill.
So 1.87 is something that we can comfortably, I mean, as much as I might like to have a little more buffer, I won't use the word squishiness, a little more buffer.
If you got to have, if you got to have a little more buffer, may I say that what you got to have?
Well, we don't.
And we just have, we have to just bite the bullet and do what we got to do.
Well, and, and that would be, that would be the thing is I would go either 1.87 or 1.97.
But the chair, what you say?
I'm, I'm, I don't have the absolute opposition to raising taxes that a lot of people do because I recognize that we are, and, and we've got to have revenues to run our entity. Uh, I think 1.87 is the minimum. If we want to do more than what we've done this year, then it would be a higher number. But if we're, if we're comfortable with the services we provided last year, 1.87 is your number.
Well, what you say?
I'd say 1.87 gets us with the numbers we can get there with a balanced budget.
Close that 5.9 figure or whatever.
See, Clark?
I agree with it because we look on page three, we've got two large things coming in 15, 16, 17.
Yeah. And that's.
And that's, and that's, that's the kind of thing that when I brought up parks and I'm sorry I brought up parks and the library, but those are, those are, yeah, thank you very much. Those are the kind of things that, that it's not so much this next, next 12 months, but the 12 months after that. We've got the remainder of that TIF project. We've got PERS. We've got any, any increases in other operations that are coming out. So we, we start, we start 24 at a zero, but if we project out to 25, we're already 600,000 in the hole for 25. So it's, it's just, you just keep kind of bumping that can down the road. We bumped the can down the road last year. We bumped the can down the road last year and, and that, that's gotten us where we are this year. Have we raised taxes a mil last year? This is my I told you so moment. If we had raised taxes a mil last year, we'd be talking about raising taxes a mil this year. And a mil somehow doesn't trigger people quite as much as something like two mils.
Well, and let me say as a business person.
One more, one more thing. We got to realize why we was elected here to make good, wise, sound, and hidden for the city. Why would we go in the hole when we don't have to go in the hole? Why would we, why would we start off in the hole when we don't have to start off in the hole for the year? Why would we do that?
Well, and, and, and it's just, we're just, we're just, and when I say in the hole, in 25, in 25, we, we, we know we've got 600,000. All things being equal, we know we've got 600,000 more in expenses looking at us than, than we do this year. And unless we have 600,000 more in revenue from somewhere, and sales tax just don't go up that much.
All right. So let me, let me throw the small business person in the mix because I am one. It is hard for me to, in a two mil increase or two and a half mil increase, to recoup the cost of me doing business because I'm, my rents don't go up. I don't, I don't do that to my tenants. I don't make my rents go up the same amount as my, as my tax increase goes up. So it, if you do it one mil one year and then one mil the next year, it is a lot easier on a business person to be able to fold that into the increases that people normally expect to see. So I'm just saying that as a, as a business person in town, that, that incremental increase is easier to deal with than it is to do a two mil and then another two mil and then whatever it is. So just saying.
But we missed that boat by not raising taxes.
Well, and I'm not trying to go back on that, but I'm just saying that. And I'm assuming you're tapping because you're ready to say something?
Yeah, yeah.
Hang on there, big guy. You passed a minute ago. Give me a second. All right, go ahead. I'm sorry.
But you also have the perception when you raise tax this year, another mil next year, another mil next year, that all they do up there is raise taxes. That's all they do, you know, because they're raising taxes every year. So I do have a problem with, with raising taxes every year, even if it is a small amount. And as a, as a small business person also, you know, I, I, I have a hard time, you know, adjusting for something like what you're talking about because I don't operate on risk like you do of a tax increase every year. And I wanted to ask a question because I am in real estate business. I know we, we budget these collections on 95% of our sales day, right? Because everybody doesn't pay their taxes. But, but I've been to those tax sales and more times than not, there's somebody standing there that are buying those properties, you know, getting the taxes. Now, all I've done is bought them, you know, I haven't, I haven't, I don't know what goes on, on your side, you know? Do, do we get that revenue when those people buy those taxes? So, you know, from the, from perspective here, from the first year that this ever happened back in the beginning of the time, then, then we missed that first year. But then after that, you know, because they're buying those taxes when they go, when they sell it to courthouse steps every three years, then the, the revenue should theoretically be the same.
We never get 100% of our appraise. I mean, we just don't. It's.
It used to get like 97, 98 and now it has dropped down.
And I feel like part of it from being a previous tax collector, because a lot of times after those tax evaluations come out in October, a lot of people will go and they will have some corrections made, they will have some problems reassessed. You may, you may lose some off of the tax rolls. So it's about 3% that you lose for that. 95%.
Okay.
And it's about, it's about, it's about where we are this year.
If it's 2%, 2% of $10 million, that's 200,000. If it's 2%.
But, but, but our collections this year are going to be about 95%. And, and, and that's an Alan Morgan question for why isn't it 100%?
But.
Or 99 at least.
But, but, but again, you still got the people to go to courthouse steps and buy the taxes. And, you know, so if it's 2%, that's 2, that's 200,000. There's 200,000 of that file that we're talking about. And we last raised taxes, I was not on the board, if I remember right, was that 2020 mayor?
Uh, yeah, I think that's correct. 2021?
2020.
2020? You weren't on the board since 2020. It had to be 2020.
I thought it was right before I came to board.
Yeah.
And I, if I, if I remember right.
And 2019, 2020.
You know, a lot of people talked about it being, you know, a COVID tax, but it wasn't really. It was one, it was one mil for the bill grant and one for the body cams.
Yes.
Right. So, and they were 600,000?
650, I think.
Okay. So it's been, it's been three years.
Yes.
So, you know, I hate to see us, you know, when we, like the old folks say, and I guess I'm one of them, you know, they'll put a tax on, they'll put a sales, they'll put a tax on for something temporarily and, you know, we'll get it paid for, but, you know.
And then it never goes away.
So we put a one mil tax on for the body cams, 600,000 in.
Reduced body cam purchase here.
I saw that. I saw it on the front page.
Yeah.
But my point is we, we, we put that on there, but that's not one mil.
No, no, it's not. But the point is we still have a, they'll have a life and we still have ongoing needs for them.
Do you have a number, Mike, that you're, a mil that you can, a rate that you could support?
And can I, can I address this taking the mil off once the body cams are paid for? Unfortunately, in the meantime, there have been other things that have come up that have to be paid for.
I'm well aware of that.
So I guess we could say we're taking off a mil for the body cams, but we're putting back a mil for fill in the blank.
Of course.
Well, and it's all a narrative. I mean, it's.
Parks and Rec.
Yep.
Um, I tell you, I tell you what.
You done, Mike?
You ain't micin', so.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to say, this is deliberative process that we almost didn't have. I'm going to tell you that and I'm not going to get into details of that. You weren't going to get into details of something. I won't get into detail of something. I know this was going to be, not be a deliberative process. Let's just, we leave that at that. But it has been healthy and it's good for us to go through this weather and, you know, and everybody just keep their mind, you know, get a little bit enthusiastic about something. This is a $30 million general fund budget and this is not something we just handed a sheet on and asked at the last minute to, to basically approve after, you know, you know, without any deliberation. This has been, this is good for us every year to do this. And, and this is part of what we get paid that 20 grand every year as a part-time job to, you know, to do, a big part of it. And so that, you know, whatever we end up with, and we, you know, we may have to raise taxes. I, I don't, we're getting down to, as they say, the short roads. But if I bring up something about the cornerstone, I mean, about Parks and Rec, but I'm not trying to get anybody's behind, but I'm just saying that those, they're places where we need to look as going forward, as trying, as trying to, you know, hold the line on increased costs where we can maybe not have a two, start with a two and a half or three million deficit next year, trying to whittle down, trying to figure out how we're going to do that. So, you know, I, I think that is healthy. This, this is a healthy process for us to go through and we need to do it. It's our job constitutionally, statutory, we supposed to, the board is supposed to do this.
Okay. We don't hit Burke. Burke, you want to reduce your contractual amounts?
We don't have to have a taxing piece at all.
I couldn't resist. I'm sorry. You were just sitting over there. Nobody's shooting at you or anything, so.
At least chairs are the way it is now.
Okay. All right. You had to do your job.
I actually had to do my job.
Okay.
So, you guys may have discussed this. I see the-
What page are you on?
Well, the salary study, the 540.
Oh, yes.
And y'all may have discussed it. The only thing I would want to do would be look in those numbers. And y'all may have already done that. If you have, I apologize. You know, because I know we brought a lot of guys up and some of those raises last year. I've been on board twice, two years we've raised, we had races twice. Some of those raises may have been significant last year. You know, there may be some, I would just like to look at those numbers.
Did you get the, you got the email, right?
I did not. It came in.
You should have. No, it was a couple of days ago.
I've been out and I missed it.
Well, it's in, it's in your email.
Okay. I won't look at that.
Okay.
So.
I said legally, we have to advertise.
Well, again, I'll go back, circle back to what I said when we started this. I would like us not to have to have a special call meeting in August. If we can advert, if, if we can agree on an amount to advertise on Tuesday night, then we can have our public hearing on August the 15th, which is our last board meeting, but it's a five Tuesday month in August. So, we can have a special call, but I was just trying to get us to the point, if we could reach a rough consensus idea of where we would go, then we would not have to have a special call in August, absent some other critical occurrence.
The advertisement does not lock you into that direction.
Right.
It just says a village rate is being discussed.
So, and that, it only makes sense because why, if you don't need public input, then, you know, to change your mind or to do something differently, then it doesn't matter. But this allows us to move forward with that. So, that was, that was my goal, was to try to keep us from having a special call in August. Period. So.
And I was trying to reach a consensus, which is why I said I could support 1.87 or, or less.
You read, you read, pull it up, pull it through on 32.
Well, I think at some point, we've got to say, this is what it is. I'm not crazy about 1.87. I'd love to see us get to a mil. I don't think we can. But in, I'm trying to get the process moving where, okay, we've got two people that could agree to that, or three people that could agree to that, or four. And just so we know we're making some progress down the field. Because at some point, somebody's got to post a number and say, here's the flag.
And what I was, what I was going to do was put it on the agenda with a blank space. And if somebody makes a motion for 1.87 or 1.97 or 2.0 or 1, then we'll see if it's got the votes. So, that gives everybody-
You don't know before you leave the room?
Sure. Go ahead. But, oh, you mean to vote? No, 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 no.
I know, I know. We're counting what people, kind of-
Well, go ahead.
I mean, I, I'm not, I don't, I'm not a taxing spend liberal, public official, but I, there comes a time when, when, you know, there may not be any other option in what we've been proposed here and historical, historical stuff we have on last year's budget and stuff back two or three years and stuff. It looks like that, that we looking at a mill and a half to 1.8 or so to get us, or something to get us up somewhere around 32 mils. But I am serious about those two categories that I want us to start to become realistic about and start putting the brakes on. That's increasing our parks rate budget and telling developers that come here, Bill, if you can make the numbers work, if you can't make them work, wait till they do work. But we're not going to incentivize you to come in here and put in retail, you know, development stuff.
I don't think you have to worry about that with interest rates right this minute.
And it is, it is a board decision. And we certainly know, you have been real clear on where you stand. I don't think anybody's, anybody is confused about that.
I'm not, I'm not a name on that.
Nope. We're, we're clear. We got you. Do you-
Well, I mean, like the board meeting, if I was going to drag me kicking and screaming.
I saw that. But that, that's the second time I've heard that.
Yeah. You know, I can't see anything over a mil myself because I'm back to the 588 less. You know, we take the 200,000, the other 2% on property tax collections up there. That gets us down like that.
Well, that makes it look right. But-
Mike, 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 before you, before you get bought into the 2% on the property tax collections, look back at our property tax collections, the checks we've actually received versus the calculations we've done at the beginning of the year. And it's not going to be, the 2% is not there. And you, you understand numbers and all of that. But Webb, it's, it's about 95% this year based on the calculation we did last-
We're not receiving our budget on our revenues from property tax. Some years we beat it a little bit, some years we miss it a little bit, but it's-
But it's, it's never $200,000 off.
I'm still stuck on me.
Okay. All right. And-
I won't go support anything over 1.87. I'm not crazy about 1.87, but I'm realistic.
Okay.
And I'm nothing if I don't go along to get along, guys.
Me too.
All right. And we, I believe Alden and Sister Unc is, it can support a 1.87. So, but again, until we get to the board table and somebody makes a motion with X in that open space.
To advertise.
To advertise. It's strictly to advertise. Then that's kind of where we are.
We doing people business.
We are.
That's what we supposed to be doing.
We are. Okay. So, anyone, anyone else, anything else? All right. Thank you, everyone. We will call it a day and, and so far, a budget. And you're out tonight making music.
That's right. Anybody that comes to Dave's tonight, I'll buy you, I'll keep you hydrated. Say that one. We don't start till nine.
We're out, Kate.
We're out this afternoon.
We're out, Kate.